Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Supervisor McAlister.
Here.
Councilwoman Kendall.
Present.
Councilman Tepori is not present tonight. Councilwoman Ruthben.
Here.
Councilman Boyd.
Here.
Present.
Thank you. Our first item is from our building inspector, some changes to the code. So I invite our building inspector up here to discuss two different codes. Would you like them?
Here.
Good evening. Bill Walters, Building Inspector, Town of Kent. I've given you two proposed changes to the town code. One is the swimming, for swimming pools. Currently, the code says that no permit is needed if you have over, permits only need if you have pools with over 5,000 gallons of water. And the state code says any, you need a permit, you need the alarm systems and everything else. If a pool's over 24 inches, doesn't say gallonage. The state code is a lot more stringent than what our town regulations are. And I believe this needs to be changed. We need to come into compliance with the state code. It doesn't matter, the state, like I said, the state doesn't say whether it's 5,000 gallons or not. Anything over 18 inches, sorry, 24 inches would need a permit.
And that's a depth, you're referring to?
The depth.
Depth.
Yes. The, the update would read in section 77 dash 42, swimming pools, no below-grade swimming pool or no above-ground swimming pool having a capacity over 5,000 gallons or a depth of more than 24 inches shall be located or constructed or maintained on any lot in residential use in conformity with the requirements of chapter 27 of the town code. New York State Uniform Prevention and Building Codes and State Energy Conservation Codes, except as provided here, when no below-grade swimming pool and no above-ground swimming pool having capacity over 5,000 square feet or a depth of 24 inches or more should be located or constructed with. And then there's, there's all kinds of, the regulations that were for the previous zoning code stay the same. Need to be 15 feet from your property line, 15 feet from a house. Every gate or opening needs to be on a fence or enclosed that go to, go to the pool. You need self-closing, self-latching gates. There's also requirement in there for no loudspeakers or amplified devices to be permitted to be heard beyond the lot line or the lot on which the said pool is located. I don't know how you enforce that one, but that's been there forever. No lighting or spotlighting shall be permitted. Projection light rays, again, that's one of the older regulations stays the same. The only thing I'm looking to change is the depth of the pool. To remove the 5,000 square feet and that it be 24 inches or more, you need a permit. You need to comply. Lots of children have been drowning. Doesn't matter whether it's 5,000 gallons or more than, I mean, we need to try to help prevent that. We've been fortunate in our town, but a lot of close calls can happen. At least in a pool that's 24 inches, the child can generally stand up. We can reach in and pick him up. You know, you take a pool that's 5,000 gallons or more, you're not going to reach in. And he's not going to be able to stand up. So that's the first proposition that I have. The second one.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
How about a hot tub? You know, so given the size of it.
Hot tubs, you still need a permit for a hot tub?
Okay.
Okay. That falls under the same regulation as a pool. The major difference between a hot tub is that it has an ASHRAY-approved lid that goes on the top of it that seals it all up. Okay? That's the only, that's the major requirement. You don't need the fence. As long as you got the top, you don't need the fencing and all the other stuff. But still need permits for hot tubs. And that's been for quite some time now, too.
Clear.
We're, we're doing a lot of those. Any other questions?
Any public comment on this? Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to, they're written separately.
Oh, yeah.
Actually.
Or are they?
Yeah, I mean, I think you have, you have two separate introductory notices, but they're both in the same local law.
So should we wait and just do it together, then?
Yeah.
No, I think you can do it, the two separate notices, just introducing the local law.
Okay.
The notices just distinguish between the swimming pools and the height of buildings, accessory buildings.
Okay.
Right. Do you want me to talk about that one now?
Yeah.
Okay. The other.
I just want to mention quickly, minor wording change for part F. There's a redundancy on less than, but that's trivial, that can be fixed. Less than 24 inches or less.
We, we put it into a local.
Correct. Yeah, it says the depth, less than 24 inches does not need a permit.
Do you have this one?
I can, I can, we can remove the or less.
I think that's the original.
Nope, that's, this is the original, I think, that you have.
Okay. Okay, Sal, let's move on.
We'll make sure that it's.
Yep.
It's fixed.
Okay. The second one is chapter 77, 31 deals with the height of accessory buildings. And that one says, no accessory building shall exceed the height of 20 feet. What I'm proposing is that in 77, 31, the height of accessory buildings, no accessory building shall exceed the height of 15 feet in an R-10 zone, only in the R-10 zone. That's their more dense areas, it's the Lake Carmel areas. People are, we're getting a lot of garages that are being built, accessory structures that are fair-sized because everybody's got one or two big trucks or a motorhome or something that they're trying to store. And they're making these big garages, and sometimes the garages are bigger than the houses. And we need to, we need to look at that. Also, by allowing an accessory structure, some people are using them as studios above, and there's a chance that later on down the road, they could become illegal apartments. So by lowering the height down to 15 feet, if they actually need the 20-foot height for a vehicle or something like that, my opinion is that they should apply for a variance, let all the neighbors know that they're going for the height, and then, and then go that way. I don't, I don't mind them going to 20 feet, but let them go for the variance, so everybody knows. Because soon as somebody gets a big garage in there, they start calling you up, and you allowed this, and you allowed that, and they're still within their rights to do that. So I would like to see that get reduced down to 15 feet. But that would only be in an R-10 zone. The R-40, R-80 zones, they have a lot more property, generally more acreage, and they could easily house those accessory structures up to 20 feet.
And Bill, would something like a cupola be considered?
Cupola is not considered, that's, that's not part of the height.
Okay.
Because generally, it's, it's for light or ventilation, or it's, it's not part of the structure. We're talking about the height to the roof.
So you have like a ridgeline, is what you're drawing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. If they want to go higher, put a variance in for it.
Yeah. I think when they built the Sears Tower versus the Chrysler Building, they went by the top of the antenna, right?
Well, if they build the Sears Tower here, I don't think I'll be worrying about it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
No comment on it? Okay. I'd like to make a resol, uh, ask the board to make a resolution introducing local law number.
I think we leave a blank.
Blank.
Blank, 2024, and providing for public notice and hearing. Be it resolved, a local law amending chapter 77 of the town code entitled zoning to add provisions governing permits for pools and height limitation on certain accessory structures in the R-10 zone is hereby introduced by myself as introductory local law to be determined of the year 2025 before the town board of the Town of Kent.
Should be 2024?
Uh, yep, should be 2024. In the county of Putnam and the state of New York, and be it further resolved that copies of a fore-said proposed local law, which is attached hereto, be laid upon the desk of each member of the board, and be it further resolved that the town board will hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the town hall in the Town of Kent, New York at 7:00 PM on, what's our date for that?
Well, so I guess we'll announce it now. In July, we're changing our board meetings to the 9th and the 16th, so it will be the 9th, is that enough time, Lana?
It's 10 days for zones.
So it should be, okay.
July 9th, and be it further resolved, the town clerk published or caused to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Town of Kent of said public hearing at least 10 days prior there, too. I make this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Don't go, don't go anywhere. I'm going to move up the short-term rentals.
Okay.
So that way, is everyone okay with that, if we move the short-term rentals up on?
Yes.
I don't want you to leave.
Okay.
All right. So now, we are going to continue our discussion and set the public hearing for the short-term rentals. I don't even know, is there any board comment? Do we just want to set the public hearing? We're all good with it. Is there any public comment? No?
Are you going to set the fees also, or is that another discussion?
The fees, we try to keep out of the code and put separately in a fee schedule.
Okay.
Can you find it?
I haven't.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
You ready?
I think you are.
Ask the board to approve a resolution introducing local law.
Blank.
Blank, 2024, and providing for public notice and hearing. Be it resolved, a local law amending chapter 77 of the town code entitled zoning to be provisions governing short-term rentals is hereby introduced by me as introductory local law to be determined of the year 2024. Somebody's jumping ahead on us. Before the town board of the Town of Kent in the county of Putnam and state of New York, and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law, which is attached hereto, be laid upon the desk of each member of the board, and be it further resolved that the town board will hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the town hall in the Town of Kent, New York at 7:00 PM on July 9th, 2024, and be it further resolved, the town clerk published or caused to be published a, by public notice in the official newspaper of the Town of Kent of said public hearing at least 10 days prior here, there, too. I make this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
May I just make one comment? So I, we incorporated the comments from the last meeting where we discussed this local law. There was one thing I left blank. You were considering having the contact person be within a certain radi, have a primary residence within a certain radius of the Town of Kent. So you just need to come up with that radius.
And is there a number that you're going, is there going to be a limit on these Airbnbs?
A limit total for the town?
Correct.
Like where you have to, where you have to be in range?
No, that's not, that's not what he's saying.
The total, the.
A total number that would be.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if I, it looks like 30, I got 30 days to process the applications for inspections and everything else. And if I get a herd of 25 or 30 people, what do I do with all the other work that has to be done?
Yeah. First come, first served, a lottery, something along those lines, right?
Yeah.
So you have 30 days to.
Process the application, conduct site inspections, make sure signage is up. I mean, if there's, there's a lot of work, I have a lot of work to do with this.
You have the potential for 300 people standing out line in front of the building.
You know, if we're talking about four or five, okay, but if we're talking about 15 or 20. I know some towns have limits, but.
I think we're anticipating something we're not sure about. I think we just deal with it when it comes.
Okay.
Go with, go with what, you know, it is. If, if there's an issue that we have to put an extension or something on it, we will, you know, at the time, but let's, we, we can't anticipate whether you're going to get five or 50, there's.
I, I hear you.
It may, it may take some time for people who are doing this or are interested in doing this to realize that they need to come in and apply and all of that.
It'll be like every other, I didn't know.
But I, I am, what, what would your suggestion be for the radius, though? I mean, what, what would you recommend, or what is, can I ask you, what has other people done? Do you know?
I don't know.
I mean, I would say if somebody's within 15 or 20 miles, I mean, that, that allows them to be up in Dutchess County, over in Westchester County.
What about Manhattan, like the city?
Well, 20 mil, that's too far. Manhattan's a little further than 20 miles.
I just play that.
But if they have, I mean, if they have a contact, somebody that can go, because I believe what the code says, somebody within that district needs to be able to get to the residence and rectify the problem that they're having then. Home, the owner could still be down in Manhattan, but whoever the agent is, needs to be within a distance.
Like a property management company or something like that?
Yeah. Somebody, you know, if the police have an issue.
Different situation.
That's a different.
They need to be able to get ahold of that agent. You don't want, you know, they're not going to come up out of Manhattan, I'll see you tomorrow.
So they would have to designate somebody within a, a certain radius.
Correct.
What was your recommendation again?
15 miles, 20 miles tops.
You go with 20?
And then maybe legalities to that. Can we even do that?
I know. 20 miles.
I mean, 20 miles gets them up into Wapungers, almost Poughkeepsie, Dover Plains.
How many miles is it to Phillips Town?
You're within the distance, I believe. Within the, pretty close.
I mean, we should at least allow county residents to, I wouldn't want to exclude them, because if they're even in county.
Right.
I think we need to look at a radius around Kent and see what encompasses, you know what I mean?
Well, Phillips Town.
Put a circle on the map.
When you go out, when you go down 301 and you exit Kent, you go into Phillips Town, Pot Lake.
I'm talking about the far end of Phillips.
Oh, the far end.
Not just hitting the border of it.
That's probably more than 20.
Yeah, I think that would be the determining factor for me, would be to drop a pinpoint in the center of Kent and do a radius.
You could say within the county of Putnam or 20 miles of the residents.
That's a fair way to put it. Within the county or, yeah. Right?
Somebody that, somebody that needs to be close.
As we include within the Putnam County or a 20-mile radius, so we get all of Putnam County, and if they're up into Dutchess or.
Connecticut.
Connecticut, right. Can we do that?
Let's have to.
You like that?
Yeah, you might want to go with 25.
25.
I'm just looking on Google Maps, so, yeah, maybe 25 would be safer.
25 mile radius.
Depending on how you drive to Phillips Town, it could be 25.
But we're going to include all of Putnam County.
Yeah, but still. Someone that's 25 miles away can get here pretty quick.
Yeah, they can be here within a half hour.
From the other side of county, you can't get here quick.
I think if you can't, you don't require a regular landlord to be that close, how can you require somebody that runs an Airbnb to be that close? Food for thought.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
Well, but there's just a greater potential for issues, greater demand, you know, for things to be addressed.
People are in the house, people are in the house.
Yeah, if there's a problem with the structure or with the building, with the operation or something, they need to get ahold of the agent. And the agent, the way the law is wrote, he's supposed to be able to respond and take care of the problem. If not, then it falls onto the building department, and then we, I'm going to tell you right now, I'll just shut them down. And just write tickets. Especially at 2:00 in the morning if they wake me up. I'm going to tell you, they're going to get a ticket.
We're going to go with Putnam, man, 25.
As long as it legally holds up, I'm fine with that.
I'll verify.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all good? All right. Our next item is our EMS hiring. Our EMS coordinator, Alex Roaner, is asking us to hire Victoria Cesari as an EMT field supervisor at a rate of $25 an hour, starting, well, it was supposed to want to start this week, but we're going to start it as of next week, which is, can't get my, my open, do you know what day it is? I guess change it to June 24th. Any board comment? Do you have it?
I just, I was questioning, I know we're running into a little bit of delay in getting the ambulance and everything. What do, what do we, this is per diem, or?
Yeah, if months, it's start, yeah. And then just start full-time, so.
Do we have?
We can word it that until.
Until we're up and running?
Until we're up and running, it's not to be full-time until up and running. So part-time until.
Or per diem, as needed, you know, whatever.
Yep.
You, you're not going to have somebody sit there and not do anything.
No.
No, I can't find the resolution.
I'll look, but I think Sue has a comment.
Susan Cots, Cots, or Town of Kent.
All right.
I have a little concerns about this hiring. I understood at the last meeting from February 20th, that Alex was supposed to be hired for three months, and now it's over three months. So now, is she still a hire person? But now she's in a position that she is hiring or asking the town board now to hire another person.
I think there's a, a little confusion on what you're saying there, so let me try to clarify it. We originally hired Alex on a per diem basis to try to establish and set this up. We had the intention that within three months, we would be completely up and running, and it would turn into a full-time position job. So that's what the three months at that time, we hired her per diem, then, remember?
She hasn't got.
And we thought, once we get up and running and got everything going, but we run into a few obstacles that we're still, we're still trying to get through.
So it was only for three months, though? But now you've decided to move ahead of that three months because everything wasn't set up?
We, we're going to roll it into the.
I think saying it wasn't set up means, makes it seem like no one was working to get it done.
Yeah, I mean, she's been working.
It's the time that takes for the state to get us, our, see all of our, you know, information back. So it's not like it's been, not, the work hasn't been getting done, it's that, it's just the timeliness of get.
Taking longer than what you expected.
Getting all the agreements from the.
Sure, sure.
Fire departments.
So when exactly, so what exactly is going to happen now?
So the three, is she still per diem, or is she full-time now? I don't remember.
She doesn't get any of the frills.
She doesn't get any.
She's not getting vacation time.
So is it per diem?
It's per diem. It's per diem, and it's going longer, the per diem is going longer than three months. Our agreement with her was that when we got operational and running, it would change over to a full-time position, and that has not happened yet.
So.
So we thought we would be done in three months with the per diem part of it.
But you're not finished.
We're not finished.
So Alex is still hired.
Alex is still working per, per diem, and she will go full-time once we get up, up and operational.
Okay.
The right way to put it?
Right. So if we, if town hall closes early, she doesn't get that benefit, she's not getting paid for those hours. All right.
We are getting closer. I mean, we are.
We are. Yes.
We're, we're.
Do you want to come up and? Okay. No, not you, Eileen. I mean, you can come up if you want to. No, no, you.
Not you, but not you.
You come up, not I. Eileen wanted to come up. We had to tell her to sit back down.
Thank you.
Aye.
So I'm Barry Sandall, the district chair of the Kent Fire District. So we've been working with Alex. You know, the Town of Kent's going to be creating a full-time EMS service, so I wouldn't expect somebody just to be hired for three months. This is going to be a, a, an operational process that the Town of Kent's going to do. So we've been working with Alex. She just gave us the gap fill process, because you're going to be taking over the Lake Carmel ambulance, you're going to be taking our ambulance. We've been working with our lawyers to come up with a bill of sale, which we're just waiting for. We had our district meeting last night, and we didn't have a chance to discuss it because the chiefs couldn't be there, but all we really need is, is a viable gap plan for when you get the ambulances operational, and then, and then we're going to give you our ambulance for the fee of $1, which we talked about. So I wouldn't expect this to take three months to undertake, I would take, expect it to be longer. But, you know, I see success in the future, as long as, you know, you keep Alex fed with the staff she's going to need to staff this full-time, so our volunteers can show up and do calls, and then the Town of Kent will take the patient to the appropriate hospital. So that's how we see it working. And, and I'm here at the meetings just to keep giving you updates, to, to make sure that the process keeps, keeps moving forward. Any questions?
No, I think it's good.
Yes.
I mean, Alex has been good about keeping us kind of in the loop of where she's at and, you know, the hurdles she's trying to get over.
There's a lot. There's a certificate of need, there's, there's going to be interactions with the county, response plans are going to have to be finalized, and, you know, she's working all this out, and I'm talking to her about once or twice a week about the subject, so. That's where the Kent Fire District is.
I have one question. What do you think the staffing need is? How many people do you think would be required to run it properly, on our behalf of the town?
Well, it, it depends. If you're going to staff something 24/7, you know, you can do the math on that. Otherwise, you have to have a mutual aid plan with other people to cover. So I, I don't have an answer that I feel comfortable saying publicly, so.
No problem.
I'm in charge of volunteers, so.
I, I think in a general sense, that Alex is, this model that she's put together, it's a certain number of full-time people, and then per diem people also helping out. It's kind of a, you know, not all per diem, but not, and not all full-time. But she has a, like, a structured plan worked out, we can share that. I don't know if I've seen it written, she's just kind of.
I think it, I think we had it last week in the backup.
With all the different positions.
I believe so.
I know she's working with the chief, Volante, and assistant chief Gasparini on a plan, which I just saw, but I haven't had a chance to take in, but I really recommend that you get everything in writing and make sure that, obviously, it's going to start out as a draft plan, and as we work through it. I'm assuming that, what I heard was you're going to get the Lake Carmels ambulance first to get that painted and operational, then we would transfer our ambulance, what's in operational, and then we'll work together. You know, some things will work, some things won't work, you have to kind of figure that out, but for the volunteers, to be able to go on a, a call, do initial assessment, triage, and then have another, the Town of Kent take the patient away allows our volunteers to go back to work or go back to, it's going to, it's going to be a real benefit for the volunteers, and that's, I thought the article in the paper was pretty good, too, so.
It was a very good article.
All right. That's, that's my update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right.
Victoria's last name, how do you pronounce that? C?
Sisiri?
Sisiri?
We don't have Jorma here to read.
Yeah. All right, so I make a motion for a resolution to hire a field supervisor for the town of Kent EMS, whereas a letter dated, if we're gonna say June 24th, 2024, a copy of which is annexed hereto and hereby incorporated herein. Alex Roner, the emergency medical service coordinator, has recommended the hiring of Victoria Caesar as field supervisor in connection with the establishment of the town of Kent EMS department, the quote EMS, and whereas the town board desires to accept the recommendations of Mrs. Roner and hire Mrs. Cersei, my apologies, as field supervisor for the EMS department at the rate of.
Twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars per hour. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Kent hereby authorizes the hiring of Mrs. Caesar as field supervisor for the EMS department at the rate of $25 per hour, subject to satisfactory completion of all background checks and civil service requirements. And be it further resolved that the town supervisors hereby authorize and directed to take all necessary action to give effect to this resolution. I make this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect timing. Our next item on the agenda is our library. Our library director Carol Donick is here just in time.
Thank you. And I'm here with several of the library board members who have come as well. Thank you for inviting us. Last month, we gave you a copy of our 2023 annual report and I'd just like to point out a few of the numbers. We're very proud that on average now 220 people visited the library every day that we were open. That's up a good bit from last year. We are coming back after the pandemic to having more and more people use the library in person. We're also proud that our, the number of items being borrowed from the library is up, but the thing that is still growing the fastest are eBooks and downloadable audiobooks. People love the digital offerings that we have. We're grateful that some of the ARPA funding is going towards the eBooks and downloadable audio because they're quite expensive, but they're something that people in Kent are definitely looking for. The other figure that I find impressive is the number of people who are attending our programs. Our children's programs especially have gotten very popular over the course of the year. Four, over 14,000 people attended programs at the library. That's not 14,000 different people. There are many people who bring their child to a program several times a month, but they're definitely coming to the library. I gave you just some figures, idea of the number of things that we own. We have almost 43,000 paper books in the library. We don't have nearly that many eBooks or downloadable audiobooks. We also have 22 museum passes, people are sometimes surprised by those, but different people learn in different ways and it's great to be able to visit, we have some of the best art museums in the world within a reasonable drive or train ride from the library. We're very grateful, most of our income comes from the town of Kent. It works out to about $44 per capita, but we sincerely believe that on average, the average resident uses more than $102 worth of resources. I tried to keep my numbers conservative, for instance, I didn't put in things like being able to use a computer for free because I don't know how to put a value on that, but it's certainly something that is used by and appreciated by our residents. I also wanted to give you while I was here, a copy of our busiest time of the year is just about to start, which is during the summer and our summer reading program, so I thought. Pass out for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would have things for both.
I have mine. Thank you.
Children and adults. Our big summer reading kickoff is going to be on Saturday, June 29th. We also have a summer reading program for adults as well, so please stop by the library this summer. The other thing I wanted to mention while I was here, for several years now, the library has distributed food in the summer through the, food comes from Food Bank of the Hudson Valley. There are many children whose best meal of the day during the school year is lunch and so when schools close, there has to be some other way to be sure that the children have enough food. So for families with children, we're teaming up this year with United Way of Westchester and Putnam to give people a choice. Families with children could pick up food at the library or United Way is arranging for DoorDash delivery, but the thing is, people need to sign up by July 3rd, so we're trying to get the word out to families facing food insecurity in our area. We also wanted to thank you, I understand that you're getting bids on the steps going to the program entrance, the back entrance of the library and we're grateful for that.
Adam's still working on that, so we don't have it like on tonight's agenda, but hopefully our next meeting he'll have all the quotes in.
That's wonderful, we've got it roped off now because it's to the point where it would be a tripping hazard for people to use the steps. Did I forget anything? Do you? Any questions?
What'd you say, June 29th?
June 29th is our summer reading kickoff.
That's a busy day in Kent.
What else is going? Are, do you have?
We have the fishing derby in the morning, then we have the summer Olympics for Kent Rec and then we'll end the night with the fireworks over Lake Carmel.
Oh my goodness.
And in between all that, we can all squeeze down to the library.
Squeeze down to the library. Well, hopefully.
If you time it all right, you can hit all three events, all four with the fireworks, you hit all four events on that Saturday, so.
Ours will end well before the fireworks. Great, well, I'm glad that there's a lot going on in town for lots of different interests.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Carol, thank you all of you for your volunteering time and everything you do over there, it's a great facility and a great resource for the residents of Kent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a very exciting one.
Yes.
We are finally going out to bid for the broken bridge at Lake Carmel, the walking bridge, so tonight I'm asking us to authorize the bids to go out so we can get the, finally get the bridge fixed. We've had the bridge, it was donated from, for, from, what was it?
Buffalo School of Engineering.
University of Buffalo. And it's been sitting waiting for this exact time and the time has come, so. Any word comment, finally?
Finally.
Any public comment?
Yep, so some of the questions I think were, we had talked about at some other meetings, that, not precast concrete that's going in there, they have to build the forms, pour it out, all that kind of stuff, so.
First, we have to build something up on the sides to hold the water.
Yeah.
And then you build the.
The concrete.
The concrete and then you put the bridge on, so.
Yeah.
And you want to read?
Sure.
It's very exciting.
Yeah, I'm excited about it. So I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for bids for the Veterans Memorial Walking Bridge. Whereas the town of Kent wishes to advertise for bids for the construction of the Veterans Memorial Walking Bridge, which was damaged during flooding, and whereas the town board of the town of Kent wishes to authorize its town clerk, Yolanda Di Capelli, to advertise for bids for the construction of the Veterans Memorial Walking Bridge, now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Kent hereby authorizes its town clerk, Yolanda Di Capelli, to advertise for bids for the construction of the Veterans Memorial Walking Bridge. I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have for the police department, we have to change some LED lights out that are not working. We went out and tried to get three quotes, only two responded with the lowest quote being Doherty Electric for $1,300, so I ask that we approve that tonight because the lights really need to be fixed.
Any comments?
Any comment? Any public comment? Anything you want to say about the lights, Alex? Please fix them.
All right, I make a motion to pass a resolution accepting a proposal for repair to the lights for the police department, whereas lighting at the town of Kent Police Department is in need of replacement and whereas consistent with the town procurement policy, the chief of police solicited quotes for the replacements and received two in response, and whereas Doherty Electric has submitted the lowest proposal for the replacement in the overall amount of $1,300, and whereas the town board of the town of Kent wishes to accept the quotes submitted by Doherty Electric, now therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Kent hereby accepts a proposal of Doherty Electric to replace the lights at the town of Kent Police Department for a total cost not to exceed $1,300, I make this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I make a motion to add an item for the police department, the generator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So unfortunately today, our generator at the police department went down and it can be fixed, but it is going to be a little bit of time before it can be back up and running, so we have to rent a generator in the time being from GenServe and our lieutenant, Vanderwood, was able to talk them down with a quote, but it was authorized, we had to authorize it to get it here and the total is $11,382.29. That is the charge to get the generator here, delivery and pickup fee, and then we're renting it weekly, the weekly fee is $2,000. The other fees are set up and take away, so, but we unfortunately need this, so I'll just wing it.
Yeah, we all have one.
Right. I make a motion to authorize GenServe to provide us with a 130 kilowatt Generac standby for a, I don't know, we don't know how long it's gonna take to fix, correct?
Yeah, we did an estimate.
So it's $2,000 per month as needed?
So I had, so for right now, a total of $11,382.29 with a $2,000 weekly.
Weekly or monthly?
No, $2,000 week, per week.
As needed.
Lots of, lots of the fee was delivery because they were about an hour and a half away in New Jersey and fee to electric to that generator and then remove it when it was fixed.
Alex, we're getting the signal that.
Can you come up and talk into the microphone?
They can't hear you out in TV land, they think we're sitting here nodding our heads at nothing.
So a bulk of the cost was actually the setup fee and delivery fee, the generators were about an hour and a half away in New Jersey, so, and then I believe it was about 12 hours they billed for setup.
So it is, the tie-in labor is 12 hours for a total of $4,416 and the tie-out labor, which is eight hours, is a total of $1,960.
Yeah, I know.
So the weekly fee will be the $2,000.
Right.
Just that going forward.
Yeah, so I think they, they took off about $1,200, $1,300 off what it normally was, so.
Do we have any estimated time of how long this is gonna be going on?
They have to order parts and they didn't have them readily available, so they said they thought it was gonna be a couple days.
Oh.
Couple days.
We're hoping we only need it for a week.
Correct.
That's, that's.
The problem being is, the police department can't be without power and with.
The PD also controls a lot of our stuff up here, so.
A lot of the trouble for the town is run through the police department with access control and the internet all comes through there, so.
It is, but it, what do we say, 18 years old the generator?
I don't know if it's that old, I think it, it's been put in at some point since I've been here, so I, I want to say it's somewhere around 12 to 14 years, but.
Is that money well spent with new generator being considered?
I think it has a lot of life left in it, it's, it's in good, in good condition still and I think we just need to repair.
That, I don't know.
I think a long time, more than 12 to 14 years. Hmm, I'm sorry?
Yeah. We just have to maintain it.
And we do maintain it unfortunately. This just happened, but, and what we were concerned too with the heat this week, that if we do lose power, it's a great time for it to happen, so unfortunately, we have to just kind of.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of do it.
Yeah. I make a motion to add two items for the planning board to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I received two requests from the planning board, let's see, the first one is for the Buddhist Association of the US to accept an erosion control bond in the amount of $12,000. Any, are we all good?
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion to accept an erosion control bond from the Chang Yan Monastery in the amount of $12,000.
Is that this resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry.
$1,000 bills, but this also has 75 and 50.
Oh, because it has this, it has, okay, can we have that one? So then let me, let me, it's, no, there's two of them and they're both in the same resolution, so let me talk about this one and then we'll read the one resolution.
Okay.
And then I have another erosion control bond, storm management bond and a wetland mitigation bond from Douglas and Lauren Holly. The erosion control bond is in the amount of $15,000, storm water management bond in the amount of $75,000 and a wetland mitigation bond in the amount of $1,700. Any public, any board comment? Any public comment? Simon, you're good with this?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to read that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to pass a resolution accepting the erosion control surety bond, wetland mitigation bond, storm water management bond and escrow for inspection fee. Whereas the planning board by resolution number six of the year 2024 dated June 13th, 2024, has recommended that the town board accept an erosion control bond in the amount of $12,000 from the owner of the property located at 2020 Route 301 Carmel, New York, 10512, identified as tax map number 19 dot dash 1 dash 4 0 dot 1, and whereas the planning board by resolution number seven of the year 2024 dated 13, 2024, has recommended the town board accept an erosion control bond in the amount of $15,000, a storm water management bond in the amount of $75,000 and a wetland mitigation bond in the amount of $1,700 from the owner of the property located at 102 Route 311 Carmel, New York, 10512, identified as tax map number 33 dot 16 dash 1 dash 8, and whereas the town board wishes to accept the recommendations as set forth in planning board resolution number six and resolution number seven, now therefore be resolved, the town board of the town of Kent hereby accepts the recommendation of the planning board and accepts the erosion control bonds, storm water management bond and wetland mitigation bond as further detailed above, I make this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to add an item for Lake Carmel to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a few more lifeguards that we need to hire for the season, so I'm asking tonight that we hire them, is everyone?
Yep.
Okay, I.
Getting to be that time.
Yes, well, so the good news is, normally we have the beaches open this time of year just on the weekends, but due to the heat this week, we're having beaches open starting now full-time, so we won't just be on the weekends, so that's good news.
Yep.
We, with, for right now, because the high school students are still in school, we can still only open the one, but at least one will be open every day.
Yeah, the rest of the.
We don't have the staffing for.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was.
Yes, but normally we don't have enough to open it during the week, so, but we can right now and we figured it was a good time since it's gonna be a little warm, so. All right, I make a motion to hire the following lifeguards, Trey Jurgensen for $15.50 an hour, Megan Connor $16 an hour, Luke McGinn $15.50, Neem Carey $16, Jeremy Smith $15.50, William Connors $15.50, Alex Kazlawis, Kazlawiks $15.50, Pat Kirin for, uh, part-time for $16, Michelle Schaefer $15.50, Anthony Savio $15 and Hannah Martin part-time for $16. I ask the board to approve these, um, as long as they complete the training course before the beginning of the season. Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Couple more things, make a motion to add an item to the agenda to advertise for a position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So a few months ago, we lost our crew chief for recreation, Chris Kehoe, so I'm asking tonight that we authorize to post the position internally.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, yeah, do you want to, just, you want to make a motion for that one?
Make a motion to add an item to the agenda on the setting a public hearing for the battery storage facility.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moratorium.
Moratorium, sorry, I didn't have that written down.
It's right here on the posting.
For the moratorium on a, to set up public hearing for the moratorium for the, on a battery storage facilities in the town of Kent. Is that better?
Okay.
You gotta keep me on my toes, Eileen, you gotta keep me on my toes.
Okay, do we want to talk about it all?
Explain about this?
Um, go ahead.
I think Nancy should.
Couldn't even figure out what to call it.
Is it called a moratorium?
Yes, you can, yes, if you would like to.
Maybe I could provide a little context first, in case people are not familiar with this, I mean, I don't know a lot of the details about the facility that's proposed in Westchester and I'm sure we're gonna hear more, but the bigger picture here is that New York State had created an office of renewable energy siting and they developed sort of blanket permitting processes and things to help facilitate getting green energy projects going in the state and in a lot of respects, that's a really good thing, right? We need to have more green energy to help mitigate climate change, so solar farms, wind farms, battery storage facilities all seem like things we should want, however, we also have to think about home rule and the fact that municipalities should have control over what happens within their borders and the legislation that was passed by the state, I think, has some overreach in it, there's a clause in one of the materials that I think is in the backup, it came to us on email, that says that this office of renewable energy siting may elect not to apply in whole or in part any local law or ordinance which would otherwise be applicable, if it makes a finding that is applied to the proposed major renewable energy facility, it is unreasonably burdensome in, in view of the state's climate targets and the environmental benefits of the proposed major renewable energy facility. So they're saying they have the ability to override the towns or the county to put in place a project if they feel that our legislation is too restrictive and so I think there's probably a push to try to get this law repealed. I think we do have some sympathetic ears in the state government, I know certainly Senator Harkam has been involved in advocating, again, this was in the backup up in Copake, they were gonna put in a massive solar farm that would have wiped out a lot of agricultural all. They were gonna put in a massive solar farm that would've wiped out a lot of agricultural land. There was pushback against that, the senator got involved. So, I think, rather than trying to repeal this entire law and saying, well, we don't wanna have any green energy projects in the state, I think what we need to do is push with our legislators to have this overly aggressive clause modified so that home rule still is sacrosanct. So, that's the background that I wanted to just mention before we get into a discussion about this specific question of whether the town should enact a moratorium on battery storage facilities like the one that's being proposed down in Westchester. And now I will shut up.
And in Carmel? There's one being proposed in Carmel as well?
It's right on the line.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, yes, you may.
My name is Ann Finisi, and I'm from the Town of Southeast. I have been very active with the residents of the, of Maipack and Somers, and also in the Town of Southeast that last week did adopt a moratorium. The Town of Carmel is expected to adopt a moratorium tomorrow, but I think maybe the town will be closed, I don't know. I have gone to, also to Putnam Valley, and they are, tonight, also adopting a moratorium. This moratorium is essential because we have an emergent technology that we don't know anything about. But one thing we know, something about lithium, is that there were fires. There were considerable amount of fires, so much so that Governor Hockel convened a commission to study what is happening, for example, in Warwick. There were fires in Long Island. And they were then residents who had these lithium storage batteries literally sited in their backyards. In Maipack and in Carmel, not 200 feet, and I was there, and I saw for myself, not 200 feet from the deck of one of the residents, you had 80, 80 containers, lithium battery containers, of one of the largest in New York State. And this was in a residential, in a residential community in what I would call a critical environmental area. Of 94 acres, perfectly wooded, beautiful acres, possibly the habitat of perhaps a species that maybe the DEC has on their list, we don't know yet. But the residents of Maipack and Somers, by the way, this lithium storage battery, 80, 80 containers, the size of containers that you have on ships. This is what was presented to the people of Maipack and the people of Somers, right on, right on, on the border. So that they took action. I assisted in some of the, in some of the actions that were taken, and I'm very proud to have done so. And what the Town of Carmel was faced with was a, a resolution, or a, what shall I say, a bill from Senator Harkman, saying that from that time on, the town would not, would not have the power over their land use. Now, that was the first bill that Senator Harkman proposed. That bill was then withdrawn, and a second bill was then reintroduced. And he has now a third bill, a third bill. What has happened in the meantime is that Assemblyman Matt Slater has gathered the supervisors, and I wish to, I wish to compliment the supervisor of Kent, as I did the supervisor of Southeast, the supervisor of Carmel, the supervisor of Patterson and Pat, and Putnam Valley. Together, they signed a letter. They signed, they signed a letter that we will maintain our control over land use. This control is, is critical because we are, we are a constitutional republic, and, and we have constituents, and we have accountability. The accountability is to the closest, closest to the constituent. Not to the state, not to the federal government, who are imposing, imposing, imposing these emergent technologies that we know very little about. We really know very little, but we do know about some of the, some of the effects. And so, what has happened is that Travelers Insurance, as a matter of fact, and I'm going to give a copy to each, each of you. Travelers Insurance has a, a warning, a warning. Lithium battery energy storage systems risks, risks. These are risks. Lithium is a very risky kind, kind of, of, of an emerging technology. And we're finding, by the way, solar and, and wind have their own risks, but lithium especially. And I would like to share this with, with each of the members.
Can I pass them down?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say, on behalf of the people of Carmel and Maipack, that they have expended their time, money, energy, day after day. They have gone to every single town board meeting, planning board meeting. They have demonstrated, they have signs. You could see it, by the way, on, on Facebook, or, you know, and maybe if you, if you would like, the Maipack News, they have also had many, many articles. And also the papers in, in, in Westchester County. The Somers, the Somers supervisor has written a letter to the Carmel supervisor concerning the, the risks that this lithium is, 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 is probably going to affect the people of Somers. I have also a, and I only have one copy, and forgive me, it's 80 pages. And I made one for myself and one for you, but it's from the Department of Public Service, and you perhaps would like to, to read that.
I'm going to give all of this to the town clerk so that she can circulate it to the board, so, that way?
I also wish to mention that the state has recognized the, the emerging technologies, and the fact that the towns are not prepared, either through their master plan nor their zoning. And that's why a moratorium is, is the right thing to do. Because these emerging technologies need a new look. And so, the New York State Energy and Research Agency, Development Agency, has a comprehensive guide for, for town officials. Because what they are recommending is that you take a look, take a look at your master plan and have a separate portion of your master plan devoted only to the emerging, to the emerging technologies. Because you need new zoning. What happened in Carmel is that they did not have the zoning. And so, a developer came and said, okay, you have your present zoning, so we can work with your present zoning. So, there has to be special zoning, special master plan taking care of, of all, of all of this. I cannot tell you, I cannot express, and I cannot describe to you the, the anxiety that the people of Maipack and Somers have had to endure over this matter. I've worked with them for about five months now, and it has, it has been, it has been really, really heartrending, it really has been heartrending. And I, I hope that this town does, does adopt a moratorium, looks at their master plan, and as the New York State Energy and Research Development Agency recommends, is that you separate out the master plan, separate the zoning, and look exactly at your emerging technologies. I thank you very much for listening. I thank you, supervisor, and I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Susan Kotsar, thank you, Ann. That was marvelous. Thank you. I've been reading about this in the newspapers, and it's making me sick.
Yes, and anyone, anyone who, who attempts to justify or rationalize.
Yeah, it's, it's wrong, it's bad.
Clearly, has not, has not experienced, has certainly has not experienced the people of Warwick, and I have been to Warwick.
They can't see, or they can't hear you.
So, um, thank you.
It's all right.
So, Mahol Pack is in Putnam County, not Westchester, and that is in Putnam County. Somers is away from this a little bit, but it is Westchester County. And Senator Harkman, in the paper, said that the Town of Carmel has not reviewed their master plan in 20 years. Sounds similar, doesn't it? So, master plan is a crucial point for this town board. You need to do it, and, um, come on over, Ann.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a workshop, it's not a meeting. This is the workshop room where we can talk.
Thank you so much.
Come on over.
That has been said about the, the Town of Carmel, that they have not. Actually, what they had was, they did have in place with the previous supervisor, Kenneth Schmidt. They had a master plan committee. Then there was the interval of COVID, and that master plan committee sort of remained dormant, unlike the COVID. Anyway, and they have now, they have reinstituted the master plan. So, it is true that the master plan had not been looked at for a while, but there was an effort to, to upgrade the master plan. Of course, at that time, with Supervisor Kenny Schmidt, they had no idea of lithium storage, absolutely none.
Okay, thank you. I hope you get your master plan in the starting plan and get it going. Good night.
Thanks, Sue. I know, that's something we definitely talked about.
Yeah, we've tried for funding for it.
We're still trying.
We're going to apply for the smart growth funding again this year, but we also have the opportunity. I think we may have enough funds remaining with ARPA if we encumber it by the end of this year that we might be able to get that done, and that would be my wish.
I thought that was really compelling. I wanna mention something that lithium fires are almost impossible to put out. So, we just went through training to put Teslas out, and the operation for doing that is to pull the vehicle away from objects that will burn and let it burn out. So, if you have large-scale lithium storage, it's, it's, when they catch on fire, you literally can't put them out.
Right.
So, that's, that's the, what they're training you is to move the on-fire vehicle away from other things?
Move it away from, so if it's near a building, you pull it into the middle of the street? And, because what happens is if you try to put it out with, with water, it's a chemical reaction, it's not really a fire. And you try to put it out, and it'll reignite on the truck taking the car away, it'll re-relight. So, it's, lithium fires, you can Google it, it's, they're, they're just, I can imagine a large-scale lithium storage facility would be really hazardous and impossible to put out if it catches on fire.
That's interesting.
The lithium facility in Warwick, you wouldn't believe it, was located a few feet from a school. They had to, they had to, and it took, it took days, days, because the fire, the lithium fire does not respond to water. No, it doesn't respond to foam. And what has happened is that we have also the issue, and I didn't bring it up, and I should have, the issue of firemen. We have volunteer firemen who are, whose lives are being put in, in danger. And so, the company, East Point, who is in Maipack, said, oh, we'll train them. What are you going to train them, after the fire? And what are, what are they, what are they going to be able to do? Since so far, they haven't found any, any substance that would put out fires. So, the, the gentleman from East Point said, well, it'll just burn out.
Do you wanna set the, be in charge of it?
Okay. I make a motion to pass a moratorium for a matter.
We have to set the public hearing for them.
To adopt a moratorium.
All right, I make a motion to set a public hearing for July 9th. To set a.
To adopt a local law.
To adopt a local law.
Setting a townwide moratorium on battery stor-
Battery storage.
I got that part written down. To set a local law on batteries, I have it written different. Battery stor-, on a moratorium on battery, battery storage facilities in the Town of Kent. Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me have my.
I wrote it completely different than you wrote it.
Okay, let me have my post-it back, thank you. Okay. So, July 9th is going to be a very busy night.
Could be a long night.
Yes, it is.
You should've left it on the other date, that I was gonna be on vacation. You good?
Okay. You wanna?
I have one for.
Yeah, I lost some.
Do you want to add something?
For, for the grant?
Okay, so you wanna, do you wanna make the?
I make a motion to add an item to the agenda related to grants.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, so, a while ago, we adopted a resolution so that we could receive Senate CREST funding to get a new heat pump HVAC system, which would be part of the town hall renovation. And at the time, we had a ballpark number for that that was relatively low. We have since gotten a ballpark number from that, from our engineering firm, that is actually probably about twice what it will end up being in the end. But nevertheless, we do need to pass a new resolution to accommodate that. So, I have a new resolution. And Nancy, I don't know if you got that, I sent it very late in the day.
I did see it.
It was stuck in my drafts folder, and I found out at the end of the day, my apologies. So, I'm gonna read this as it came from, Melena, from the grant firm, and I'm hoping it's acceptable. Any comment on that before we proceed?
Nope.
Okay. So, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of community resiliency, economic sustainability, and technology program CREST funding for the installation of a new geothermal, it's not geothermal, sorry, for a new HVAC system at Old Town Hall, and EV charging stations at the new town hall, and approval of a local match contribution. Whereas, the Town of Kent seeks to foster the use of clean renewable energy sources to power their community and to reduce the harmful effects of fossil fuel emissions that endanger residents and the natural environment. And whereas, the Community Resiliency Economic Sustainability and Technology Program CREST funding provides aids for municipal entities to implement renewable energy initiatives. And whereas, the Town of Kent received notice of the award of $100,000 of CREST funding to dedicate towards a new heat pump HVAC system. system at Old Town Hall with a number of $261,000, which again is about double what I got from a local contractor, and EV charging stations at Old Town Hall for $28,892.50 and new town hall parking lot, $28,357.84. And whereas the total project cost is $318,250.34, the crest award will fund up to 100,000 of the total project cost and any expenses beyond are the responsibility of the town of Kent. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Kent hereby authorizes the acceptance of these grant funds and approves the required local match of $218,250.34 to be provided via local capital, which is ARPA. And be it further resolved that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the grant agreement and the signature of the town supervisor constitutes acceptance of the terms and conditions of the grant agreement and approves execution of the grant agreement. I make this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Am I good?
Yep, you're good.
I ask the board to approve the following vouchers that were over the threshold for June 18th, 2024. Carmel Central School District, $5,697 for the March gym rental. Semco Water, $9,810.06 for the May Water District Number One. ESO, $5,728 for EMT software. Hogan Rossi and Lagore, $5,416.63 for lean, June legal services. Insight Engineering, $5,921 for Hughes Park. July 4th ever, what's that? Oh, that's the company. July 4th ever fireworks, $5,000 fireworks deposit. Cuba Sports, $2,516 for volleyball. Managed Technologies of New York, $2,769.24 for IT support from 6.3 to 6.16. $2,769.24 for IT support from 5.624 to 5.19. Hudson, Mid Hudson Concrete Products, $9,787.75 for concrete block for beach number seven. Millennium Strategies, $3,500 for June grant services. Northeast Sweeper and Rentals, $48,100 for sweeper rental. New York State Department of Civil Service, $274,230.61 for June health insurance. NICEG, $2,871.70 for Ryan Electric at Ryan's Field. New York State Municipal Workers' Comp, $41,788.75 for the third installment of workers' compensation. Ring Squared, $3,905.13 for the June telephone service. Laura Roberts, $4,075 for the May prosecutor. Wind Waste, $10,128.83 for Lake Carmel garbage and $9,978.26 for Lake Carmel garbage. Then we're going to add Royal Carding, $6,275.76 for recycling garbage. I ask the board to approve as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a bunch of announcements. So the first announcement is just to reiterate that we're going to be changing the July meetings to the 9th and the 16th. Town Hall will be closed tomorrow and we also will be closed July 4th and 5th for the 4th of July. Let's see what else we have. Our farmer's market last weekend was a huge success. Vendors were happy. People that came to shop were happy. Everyone was happy. So our recreation assistant, Juliette Kizari, did a wonderful job organizing and it was such a success that on July 13th, we will have our next farmer's market. So we're hoping to have some more vendors and just a, a good time for everyone to come on out again. Let's see.
Just to piggyback to that, that some of the vendors ran out of food and other stuff that they were selling because there were so many people that showed up. That's how good it was.
Yes. And they're thrilled to come back.
Good.
They called us to say, we'll come back when's the next one. So this Sunday at 10:00 AM is the Bob Schwartz Memorial Bench Dedication, 10:00 AM at the end of the walking path on Lake Shore Drive East. So, let's see. Then, on Wednesday, June 26th, we are showing our first summer movie, Wonka, the 2023 version. So come join us out here in town, in front of Town Hall. We'll have popcorn and Wonka will start just as it gets dusk. Then on June 29th, make sure you have your whole day free. If you're a Lake Carmel resident, you can start off at the fishing derby. You can register at 8:30 at Beach Four. And then when you're done with that, you can head over to Ryan's Field from 12 to 2 for our Summer Olympics. And we will also have ice cream emergency there for ice cream after you participate in all the Olympics. And then you can end your night with fireworks over Lake Carmel.
And hit the library in the middle.
And hit the library in the middle from 11 to 1. So if you time it right, you can make all the events. I will be all of them. So. And I believe, oh, July 20th, we're also having our shredding event outside and we'll have the E-Way Shed also open that morning, 9 to 12. So you come, you bring your papers, you watch everything get shredded in front of you. And it's a free event. So. That's all I have. Seems like a lot.
All right. So for the fishing derby, you do not need a fishing license for that day? So any age can come and fish for that day?
You do have to be a Lake Carmel resident or with a Lake Carmel resident.
Okay, very good. And also with the farmer's market, we were there looking for donations for the fireworks and people donated over 400 bucks that day. We got to go put towards the fireworks. So thank you to everybody who came by and donated for the fireworks.
That's great.
How does the group participate in the farmer's market if they wanted to expand the town space?
It is, but you can call the rec office and they can fill out the application. There's a, it's a $20 fee for a space.
You should repeat that question so that they hear what you said.
Okay. So the question was asked about how someone can become a vendor and there is information on the town website or you can call the recreation office. There's the flyer, there's a QR code. And if you scan the QR code, it'll take you right to it, but you can also call.
Yeah, but only here. This is the only official place. Seems like somebody posted something the other day that seemed a little funky. I don't think we figured out what that was, but just only call here for the spots.
Have anything?
I know that tomorrow is Juneteenth and there's going to be a Juneteenth celebration at the Veterans Memorial Park throughout the day with some music and I think a play reading and some ice cream and a food truck there.
Okay. I wanted to thank our supervisor for allowing Senator Harkman's office to host Narcan training yesterday. I had been to brief Narcan trainings in the past. This was much more informative and really taught me a lot about the kind of stigma that people face that use these materials, the kinds of materials that are out there now that, you know, not what we had in my day. So quite a lot of useful information there about how to mitigate harm, how to ensure that people that are going to use these substances can stay safe. And I'm hoping to get some of this material posted on the town website and I do encourage folks out there to think about attending one of these trainings. I know way too many people who've lost a family member due to the opioid epidemic. And although I've never come across someone who was in dire straits and needed Narcan, it would be very upsetting to me if I encountered someone like that and didn't know how to help. And there are lots of ways to help. So I encourage you to pursue that any way that you can. Meanwhile, on the 26th, before the movie, at the library, there will be an event with Guiding Eyes for the Blind, an open house where you can watch a puppy training class and that's from 5:00 to 6:30. So before the movie that night, you've already heard about the summer reading event. And I also wanted to mention some community hikes that the library will be hosting. I assume that's at the trail system right here, weather permitting, on July 13th and August 10th at 11:30 AM. So as always, lots going on at the library. Thanks.
As far as Narcan, does the Kent Police Department offer free Narcan or anything like that?
We are providing Narcan by probation.
Yep.
So the Narcan that we carry is provided by the county through one of the programs. We don't distribute it. If somebody came to us and asked for it, we would see what we could work out, but we don't have a program at this point that we distribute it out.
Okay.
The person, the person who led the training last night had a list of resources and apparently there is one place in Putnam that it is available at no charge. And we'll try to make sure that gets on the website. And I'll get that to you, Sean.
Okay.
Any public comment? On whatever you want it to be.
I just found out in a text that the Kent Fire Department is going to have a cooling center tomorrow because of the hot weather from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM at 2490 Route 301. Somebody's hot, they can go there and we'll give them water and, and it'll be nice and cool.
Thank you for saying that. Reminded me, the town hall is also open, well, we're not open tomorrow, but Thursday and Friday we'll be here and you can use this as a cooling center as well as the library. Any other public comment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.